If we will all please stand, Mr. Doug Skaggs will lead us in prayer.
Thank you, Lord, for the day you've given and the evening that you bring us here to do the business of the city, try to improve everything that we see, and try to get the work done here. We ask you to be with this council this evening, and that you would be with us in everything we do, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, and we'll ask for roll call vote, please.
Acting Mayor Gary Moore.
Present.
City Attorney Darren Rice.
Here.
Alderman Dewey Eccleberry.
Here.
Alderman Cody Atterbury.
Here.
Alderman Clifford Reaver.
Here.
Alderman Tyler Lampley.
Here.
Alderman Eugene McGill.
Present.
Alderman Jerry Lizzenby.
Here.
Alderman Terry Stahl.
Here.
That constitute a quorum, and we can move on with business. In your package you received was the minutes of the last council meeting. Are there any questions to the minutes at the last meeting?
If not, I'll make the motion to approve them.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Alderman Lampley, seconded by Alderman Stahl, to approve the minutes of the August 23rd meeting. Roll call, Atterbury?
Yes.
Eccleberry?
Yes.
Lampley?
Yes.
Lizzenby?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Reaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
And the minutes are approved. Next would be the approval of bills that were submitted for payment. Any questions on any of the bills? If not, is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
Motion by Alderman Eccleberry, seconded by Alderman Stahl, to approve paying the bills for this meeting. Roll call vote, Eccleberry?
Yes.
Lampley?
Yes.
Lizzenby?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Reaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Atterbury?
Yes.
And the bills are approved. Next would be the public comments section. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to address the council, we ask that you step up, state your name, your address, and you'll have three minutes to address the council. At this time, is there anybody that would like to address the council? Seeing done, we will close the public comments section and move on to routine business. The first item on this evening's agenda is the ordinance to rezone the hospital-owned property from an R2 to a P-zone. We held a public meeting just a few minutes ago, and the hospital has purchased some property, and they're just looking to rezone it from an R2 to a P. Is there any discussions or questions about the rezoning? If not, is there a motion to approve the rezon?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
I've heard Eccleberry seconded. Motion by Alderman Lampley, seconded by Alderman Eccleberry, to approve the ordinance to rezone hospital-owned property from R2 to a P-zone. Roll call vote, Lampley?
Yes.
Lizzenby?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Reaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Atterbury?
Yes.
Eccleberry?
Yes.
And that motion is approved. The next rezoning request is property that is currently owned by the city of Fairfield, down by the old Lakeside property. We purchased that property through MJ Properties, and we're just asking to rezone that from an R3 to a P-zone also, with, you know, some hopes that we can, you know, expand that a little bit and bring some positive things to that area. Any discussions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, I'll second it.
I have a motion by Alderman Stahl, seconded by Alderman Reaver, to approve the ordinance to rezone city-owned property from an R3 to a P-zone. Roll call, Lizzenby?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Reaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Atterbury?
Yes.
Eccleberry?
Yes.
Lampley?
Yes.
And that is approved. Item number three on the agenda is a request from the Fairfield Community High School for a road closure for their homecoming parade. Superintendent Falkerson has requested that approximately from 1:00 p.m. to 3:15 p.m. on Friday, October the 7th of 2022, that they are allowed to close the streets for their homecoming parade. Discussions?
I think we need to do it, so I will make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Alderman Lampley, seconded by Alderman Reaver, to approve the street closing request for the FCHS homecoming parade on Friday, October 7th. Roll call vote, McGill?
Yes.
Reaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Atterbury?
Yes.
Eccleberry?
Yes.
Lampley?
Yes.
Lizzenby?
Yes.
And the street closing is approved. Item number four is the resolution for an appointment to the police pension fund. Before I took office, L. Brian Williams had submitted his resignation from the police pension board due to time constraints. It took a little hunting to find a replacement, but Brett Berger has volunteered to step forward and fill the unexpired term of L. Brian Williams. If there's no discussion, is there a motion to approve Mr. Berger's appointment to the police pension board to fill the unexpired term of L. Brian Williams?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Motion by Alderman Eccleberry, seconded by Alderman Lampley, to approve the appointment of Brett Berger to the police pension board. Roll call vote, Reaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Atterbury?
Yes.
Eccleberry?
Yes.
Lampley?
Yes.
Lizzenby?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
And that appointment is approved. Number five is the ordinance changing the setback requirements. You know, last month, we had a discussion, you know, our current setback is seven feet. There was some discussion whether we would like to change that setback number, and at that time, we feel that it was the consensus of the council, that we would like to change it from seven feet to two feet. And again, that's just, you know, a setback, you know, we've had some discussions. Seems to be more and more people are wanting to build privacy fences. You know, we don't want to restrict them. We've changed some other ordinances to allow, you know, for the construction of a privacy fence, but this changes the setback. Any discussion on changing of the setback?
Yes, could there be a clause in there saying if both parties agree, it could be on the property line?
This is something that's actually coming from our zoning code, so I don't know, you know, it would be going from, you know, individual to individual versus how we've already got it codified with our zoning boundaries and regulations. You know, I could check to see if it's something, you know, we could make it as perhaps like a, I don't know, some special accommodation or something on the code.
You know, and some of the concerns there is what happens if...
Yeah, something...
The concern there might be what happens when the property's sold. I mean, you and your neighbor might get along well, but, you know, if you sell your house, you know, and sit, you know, now the neighbor doesn't want the fence there, what happens? I mean, you know, it's something that would have to be added in to the deed of the properties or something like that.
Yeah, you know, we could go ahead and, you know, one idea, since I've already got it, we could maybe consider passing this tonight. I could maybe try to see what kind of options we've got at the next meeting, if that'd be all right, or...
Check.
Well, then, I mean, this is a huge step forward from seven feet, and then if we can add a clause afterwards, I mean, I don't have a problem, I mean, if we can write it up right, because we have to make sure the future down the line is, you know, one person may want to change the color of their fence, or this or that, and trying to figure out who owns it and everything else. So to figure out the legality of the change ownership.
I'll definitely...
Jerry?
Should that be a total of a four-foot?
Yes, yeah.
Who's going to maintain that?
Well, if I set back the fence two feet on my property, I'm going to be responsible for the upkeep of the two feet. If my neighbor builds a fence, he's going to be responsible for his two feet. If just one of us builds a fence, it'll be, you know, the property line. I'll maintain to the property line, just like he will maintain to his property line. Any other discussions?
I tend to agree with Dewey that if both parties agree, it should be able to put it on the property line, but I don't know, I will write that up in the ordinance.
We might just pass something that's just solely related to fencing, you know, fences and that type of thing. I think we could do that, and that would be...
I mean, this could actually save, say, Property A built a fence on the property line, and Property B agrees to it, but then later Property B wants to build a fence finishing their property. They could connect to that.
Sure, right.
And it actually saves them money, because they don't have to hudge that third side up.
Right.
I don't know how you'd write it up also, but if there's a fence there and you buy the property, and it's on the line, I don't think you'd have any say-so whether you take it down or not. I mean, it was there when you purchased the property.
Yeah, I think the only issue was is how to maintain that property all down.
We'll let Attorney Rice do some investigating onto that. Is there any other discussions on the two-foot setback?
No, is this property property, or is this by sidewalks, or anything else, or...
This is just as it relates to the side yard of the property, so basically...
So if you have a neighbor next to you, but not necessarily...
It would run from property line.
I would make...
Any other discussion? Is there a motion to approve the setback change?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Motion by Alderman Eccleberry, seconded by Alderman Reaver, to approve the ordinance changing the setback requirements. Roll call vote, Stahl?
Yes.
Atterbury?
Yes.
Eccleberry?
Yes.
Lampley?
Yes.
Lizzenby?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Reaver?
Yes.
And that motion ordinance is passed. Item number six on the agenda is the ordinance of transfer of the property between the Park District and the city. Again, this deals with some property out there by the Lakeside Park, where we're going to install the new water tower. I believe Connor and Connor needed just a little bit more room, and Attorney Rice has worked diligently on that, so I'll let him explain the particulars.
Yeah, this is because the party that we're wanting to get the property from is a governmental entity, the Park District. We don't have to go through all the publishing that we normally have to do for transferring property, but we do have to pass an ordinance indicating that we have a need for that property, and then once we do that, then that goes to the Park District, and they will pass a resolution indicating that they're willing to convey the property. And then I've already got the deed and the resolution prepared, and they've already discussed it at their last meeting, I think that was on September 8th. And, you know, so they're well aware of what we're doing and what we're up to, but this is just something that's required by statute, that we follow this, and so this is, I guess, the first step in doing that. So does anybody have any questions about that, or say none, I'll turn it back to the mayor?
Any other discussions on the proposal? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion. Second that.
I have a motion by Alderman Lampley, seconded by Alderman Eccleberry, to approve the ordinance dealing with the transfer of property between the Park District and the city. Roll call vote, Atterbury?
Yes.
Eccleberry?
Yes.
Lampley?
Yes.
Lizzenby?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Reaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
And that ordinance is passed. Item number seven is a TIF redevelopment agreement with the War for the Water Tower project. Again, this was discussed last council meeting, and Attorney Rice is drawing an agreement for the TIF, to be TIF money to be used for the construction of the new water tower, and that amount of TIF monies to be utilized is $727,133. That calculates to about 28.7% of the project, which is what TIF is the amount of customers that would be served by the water tower within the TIF district. Alderman Lampley, do you have anything to add?
No, I mean, it was just set up on the percentage when it was figured a long time ago. That's just what we've got to do to get it set in stone. We've talked about it multiple times, that we're using the TIF money for the water tower, but we have never officially approved this ordinance, so we need to get it done to work through the project.
And again, the total cost of the project, you know, has went from 1.4 to 1.8 million dollars. You know, we got $200,000 from Darren Bailey's office, and then the TIF project, and then we will use our line of credit at the Clay City Banking Company for the remainder of the balance. Any discussion on the TIF agreement? If not, is there a motion to approve it?
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
Motion by Alderman Reaver, seconded by Alderman Lampley, to approve the TIF redevelopment agreement for payment of the water tower project. Roll call vote, Eccleberry?
Yes.
Lampley?
Yes.
Lizzenby?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Reaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Atterbury?
Yes.
And the agreement is approved. Item number eight is a TIF redevelopment agreement with Ginger Ales. Again, Ginger Ales met with the TIF committee, which consists of Alderman Lampley, Alderman Reaver, and Alderman Atterbury. Alderman Lampley is the chairman of that, and do you have anything to add?
So we met with the ladies that own the Ginger Ales here in Fairfield, their expectations when they came and visited us was they would have 18 to 20 employees, four of which would be full-time people. They bought the old, I don't know what you want to call it, it's been a lot of things, KFC, or the Video Store, or Camtasia, whatever, and redeveloped that site, put a lot of money into it, to bring a business into town. And after figuring with what taxes would be, and then taking into account how many employees they'd be bringing to town, the TIF committee recommends $30,000 to Ginger Ales to help them with their startup.
Discussion? If none, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Alderman Stahl, seconded by Alderman McGill, to approve the TIF agreement with Ginger Ales. Roll call vote, Lampley?
Yes.
Lizzenby?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Reaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Atterbury?
Yes.
Eccleberry?
Yes.
And that motion is approved. Item number nine is a ordinance approving a loan for the electric meters. Everybody's aware that, you know, Wayne White Electric is handling our servicing of our electrics. They are going to install new AMI meters at all of our residents within the city, which will give them the ability to automatically read from the office, and it'll just make everything a lot easier and for everybody involved. This is what is designed as a red-leg loan. That red-leg loan was sponsored by Clay County Electric Co-op in Flora. Wayne White could not do it because of their ties with us, so Clay County Electric stepped to the plate. This is a 0% interest for 10 years. We're going to, the cost for the meters was about $686,000. The meters have been on back orders for quite some time. They did get about 200 meters in earlier this month, and hopefully they'll get the rest of them in. This agreement, we're not ready, I don't think, to pull the loan yet, but we just need to get it approved. Wayne White has given us a few bills, but it's not for the actual meters themselves. The city is required to show that we have $136,000 available as part of our loan agreement. With the payments that we will make, that will suffice with that. But we just need the ability, when the meters are here, to go ahead and execute that agreement. Attorney Rice, do you have anything else there?
The only other thing on, as you can see in the ordinance, is that Alderman Lampley would be authorized on signing some of the documents that are related to that, and I think that, you got the amount?
I'm not for sure, that, no.
Okay.
Somehow it's thinking $568,000.
Okay. The loan, that was the numbers that I think I had received, I think, but, you know, that might be... It's just, it should be about $544,000, but...
Okay. Any other discussions? And again, Alderman Lampley's authorized to sign simply because of my perceived conflict of interest with Wayne White Electric. Any other discussion? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
I have a motion by Alderman Lizzenby, seconded by Alderman Stahl, to approve the loan documents for this ordinance to provide for a loan payment. What'd you say, it was Clay County?
They're the sponsor.
The sponsor, for the payment of electric meters, and that will be also authorizing Alderman Tyler Lampley to sign those documents, we need it. Roll call vote, Lizzenby?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Reaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Atterbury?
Yes.
Eccleberry?
Yes.
Lampley?
I'll second it.
And that passes. Item number 10 is a recreation fund request. Last council meeting, Alderman Lampley kind of gave us a heads-up that, you know, this would be coming. At this time, I'll turn it over to Alderman Lampley.
Yeah, so the Recreation Committee meeting, no, Livy is here, Matt, I didn't see coming. Matt, last week, and we started throwing out a lot of ideas, and we came up with our list of things. So what you'll see that we're requesting tonight is inflatables for Trunkertree during Halloween weekend, which, are we doing Monday night, Livy? And this includes seven inflatables, so it's a lot of different things that we can really incorporate up on the lot east of the post office there. Kind of a bigger Trunkertree night, bring kids to more of a little bit safer area, you know, right there. So that's 850. Then the big ticket is the ice rink again, with a train, and then a vendor tent. So kind of making a whole Christmas weekend. So that is $10,492.50. As you know, we do charge the kids to use the ice rink, get on the train, things like that. We have people that have at least expressed interest in being sponsors, so we do expect to even get money from that. Last year, we did lose a little bit, but we think, you know, this year, we're bringing a lot more stuff to it. Then also, the people will be paying a vendor rental, things like that. So we know the tent will probably be paid for for sure, and then getting the kids to pay to skate and things like that. And then stuff for the eclipse is the last item on there, and that will be used for a lot of different events, not just the eclipse and Unplay the World. So the total Recreation Committee asked is for $11,842.57. Like you said, we do expect to get a substantial part of, or even all of that back.
Discussion? Again, I think the Recreation Committee's done a wonderful job with the events that they're willing to sponsor and the funds that they put forth, you know, to help, you know, with the events of the city. If there are no discussions, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion. Second it.
I have a motion by Alderman Atterbury, seconded by Alderman Reaver, to approve using recreation funds for payment of various city promotions and projects. Roll call vote, McGill?
Yes.
Reaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Atterbury?
Yes.
Eccleberry?
Yes.
Lampley?
Yes.
Lizzenby?
Yes.
And that is approved. The last routine business item on the agenda is an ordinance authorizing the modification of the agreement with Sunrise Sanitation. I'd like to just go back with a little history here. You know, it's probably been two years ago, you know, our contract expired, and the city council sought bids to see what was available. council sought bids to see what was available. You know, Republic at that time was our contractor, and Sunrise was the other company that put in a bid. At that time, you know, we looked at the contracts that was available. I was, I was at the Alderman position at that time. But if you, if you take a look at where it started, back in 2020, Sunrise bid $10 a month, the other competition was $12.50 a month. That saved us, you know, there was a savings in the city there of $66,000 in the first year. In year two, Sunrise held it at $10. The other company asked for $12.88. That saved the city $76,000 in year two. In year three, Sunrise then asked for an increase to go to $10.30. The other bid was $13.27. That saved the city $78,408. The next year, in 2023, the anticipated cost was held in check by Sunrise at $10.30. The other company moved to $13.67. That was a savings of $88,968. The last year of the contract will be 2024. Sunrise anticipated $10.30. The other service was $14.08. That was a savings of $99,792. When you take a look at that over the life of the contract, it was, you know, I felt it was pretty easy for this city council to approve that contract, which was going to save our residents about $409,000. You know, we felt that that was something that was good to our residents, and it was, at that time, we felt it was a no-brainer. You know, some things have changed, you know. I mean, I will be the first to admit that Sunrise maybe didn't meet some of our expectations. But in the flip side of that coin is, I have to say that some of our residents didn't meet the requirements of Sunrise. So there was a constant battle, you know, and a battle goes on today. Within the old contract, there was a clause in there that said under good faith, and with the approval of the council, that Sunrise could ask for an increase, and that's what they did. They first notified us that they would like to have an increase due to economic hardships at $1.50 per household per month. At that time, you know, the city council, we kind of thought maybe we wanted to open up the contract and take a look at maybe getting something to change. Me thinking about it for a while, I'm not for sure that opening up the contract was in the best interest for our residents. You know, they was asking that if we opened up the contract, that the, the old contract become null and void. I was afraid at that time, you know, if we opened up the contract, it was going to cost our residents more than $1.50 per month per household. I mean, if you take a look at, you know, what, what Republic wanted to charge at that time, you know, and I'm going to be the first to say, and is that, in my opinion, and this is just my opinion only, she wrote a bad contract. She, she knew where she was at, where we was at, and what happened. Nobody in this room or in this county anticipated COVID to be here, and the negative impact it would have on the, the economy. You know, diesel fuel is $5.68 a gallon, got up to $6. I mean, it's unfortunate, you know, and I think there's a lot of residents that are dissatisfied with, with that contract, but, you know, I truly believe that it's in our best interest of the city to give the $1.50 a month increase, rather than taking the chance and opening the contract, and it costing our residents $15, $20, who knows? And with that, I would, I would like to have some open discussion of what we think, and I'll open it up now.
When would this start?
You know, she, I, she gave us a modification agreement, and she, you know, she did do a September 1st, but, you know, it's not been approved by the, by the council. I mean, we can make it retroactive September 1st. You know, I've instructed, you know, Kayla, you know, and she withhold the checks anyway until, you know, the amounts are approved. Other questions, other comments? I mean, now, now's the time, because we're, you know.
I mean, it's unfortunate, I mean, you know, looking at other towns, I've kind of been online and run up other cities to see what their, their rates are. I mean, they're substantially higher than ours, from what I saw in a few surrounding communities. People in the country pay a much substantial rate, which understandably, you know, people spread out. I don't like the idea of raising it, but I understand it. I mean, everything in my business has went through the roof, trucking has went through the roof, everything. I mean, I don't know how she's really affording to do what she's doing, really. So it's unfortunate, but I don't know that we have much of a choice. And I know if we opened up the contract, looking at these other communities and what the other contracts are coming down for, we'd be seeing probably maybe $5 more or not, just this $1.50.
And I believe there have been other towns that she services. I believe Al, the city of Albion or Grayville has honored, you know, that modification agreement. The city of Jeff is negotiating with her also on, you know, the modification. Any other discussions?
I agree that the $1.50 per resident is much better than five or even $10 per resident, at least till the end of the contract.
I agree with that too, at least there was an alternative, but there's not.
How many more years do we have as of today?
We're good through 2024. And again, you know, I'm not, you know, I acknowledge that there's problems with it, you know, and I acknowledge that it's on both sides, you know. It's on their side, and it's on our side, you know. You know, we're trying to educate, you know, what she, what she will accept and what she won't. I mean, it's been on our Facebook page, you know. But I, you know, we just need to go one, I guess, one item at a time.
Well, I mean, I do, I do agree with you that both parties are at fault here, of what they will and what's happened, and how it's, they got there. Now, there has been sometimes where she says she would take this, but she's not picking that item up. So.
And Alderman Eccleberry, the only thing that I can say there is, if, if there are, is a resident out there, or there is an item that we feel should be picked up, you know, I mean, Diane is extremely busy as she is, and she does a wonderful job, but, you know, run things back through, through Diane, and we'll get the resident an answer. It might not be the answer they like, but we will get them an answer. I mean, that's, that's about the only thing we can do.
Yes.
Is just ask the question.
And I, and I will personally be going around the Friday, or Thursday or Friday, of both cleanup, and check you, to see if the items are out there or picked up, like I did this last Friday, just to see if she's following through.
Okay. Not a problem. And, you know, one of the other things on that, you know, that we've, that we discussed, and I'll jump away from the contract, you know, is, is getting an additional dumpster at the street and bridge, and we can have the street and bridge department pick up what they failed to. But the city, the thing the city council needs to do there is discuss a rate structure. Not opposed to doing it, but, you know, the street and bridge, you know, that's not their, their number one job to go around and pick up a couch, a mattress, or something like that. But if the residents are willing to pay, you know, maybe we can work something out. I mean, somebody is going to have to pay, you know, for the dumping of the dumpster at the cost.
And that, and that helps get the town to pay.
Exactly.
I mean, I think that's a cost, you know, the city could, you know, just make it a nominal fee that's, you know, not too, probably won't cover our costs, but, I mean, it's something that we can share to help get the city.
Yeah. And Tina just mentioned that we'd have to talk, check with the billing, you know, to see if it can be made retroactive. Right. Any other discussion?
I'm going to say that I'm against the $1.50 raise.
Okay.
Because why don't you go in, nothing? Drive around the city, walk, pick up. I've had a mattress down in my ward for two months laying there that has not been picked up. So I'm just totally against your $1.50 raise.
Okay. Understood. Do you feel the city ought to go around and pick it up and charge?
No, not really, no.
So how do, what are we going to do? Are we just going to leave it set there?
Well, she's, she's the one who bid the contract that she'd pick it up once a month, and she has, she's failed. It's all over town, just not in the third ward, it's all over town. Like Derek says, it's ridiculous.
Okay.
Now, we got potholes and stuff we need to be working on.
Okay. And again, I mean, I'm not taken up for or not, you know, but I mean, you know, the only thing that we can do is, is get an address, and to ask what the item is and why it's not been picked up.
It's a bed mat, just been there two months.
Now, again, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to argue over the fact, but if you read the contract, you know, the contract says a four-by-four square.
Mattress is not very big, it's like a little queen's.
It's over four-by-four, you know, and I'm not trying to defend her, you know, because I was sitting in that chair when she stood right there and told us that she could do everything that Republic did. You know, I mean, I understand it.
So what do we have to do, go around, mark four-by-four spots on everybody's there, so they know, want to pick up, want not to pick up?
I, I don't know what the answer is, because, I mean, there's stuff that has been, been identified that is not subject to being picked up, that still gets put out there every week.
You guys do what you want, but I'm against it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Is there a motion to approve the modification agreement?
I'll make that motion. I'll say it again.
A motion by Alderman Stahl, seconded by Alderman Lampley, to approve the ordinance authorizing the modification of the Sunrise sanitation agreement. Roll call vote, Weaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Atterbury?
Yes.
Eccleberry?
No.
Lampley?
Yes.
Lizenby?
Unfortunately, yes.
McGill?
No.
That motion is approved. That will conclude the routine business. The first meeting of the month, we always have the financial report, and I believe I give everybody a copy, there is some extra additional copies up here. Just, just the, the big picture here, August expenses for the city totaled $1,628,114. The August revenues collected was $1,685,702. So we had a positive net income of $57,458. Year-to-date expenses are at $6.6 million, and revenues are at about $6 million, a little over $6 million, with a negative income of $517,904. August, as far as cash flow, saw cash flow at a negative $7,743. We had a payroll in the month of August of $329,117. $1,547,277 for the year. Gaming income was $10,509. For the year is $48,393. Sales tax income for the month of August was $137,896. And for the year-to-date, $513,285. The bar graph down below, you can kind of see where the beginning balance was for our fiscal year, and kind of where we're at, you know, right now. Any questions on the financial report? If none, we'll move into miscellaneous. The one thing I might want to say is October the 8th confirmed. Under the miscellaneous, we might want to mention that we plan on having a citywide cleanup on October the 8th. We'll have the dumpsters available at the street and bridge department. We'll try to work to get, also get something going on for some electronics, and we're going to try to drive that to the city residence only. You need to show your utility bill or something, driver's license with the address, with the city of Fairfield to drop off any electronics, you know, the last time we had it, it was a huge success, but it was full pretty quick. Miscellaneous, again, Fall Fun Fest is going in, you know, the organizations have done a wonderful job preparing, you know. I hope everybody enjoys the Fall Fun Fest. And with that, any, does any of the Aldermen have any miscellaneous comments?
Where do we stand at on the reservoir? How's that going along?
The reservoir, I've had some, some conferences with Illinois Department of Resources. The city has been identified as a stakeholder in this project. Right now, through October the 16th, it's in a phase study, trying to get some flows, some water flow. And again, if you remember, Ivan Dozier was here, you know, if this study comes out to be a positive, that they feel that they, it's worth moving up to the next level, we'll get them to move up to the next level. You know, unfortunately, you know, the state doesn't move as fast as, as we would like for it to, but, you know, it is in the study phase now through October, and after the October study phase, we'll see if we can get them moved up to the next level.
This question, I think, was for Darren, but how are we doing on our property transparency, our sales of properties, in fact, are we?
I think they've all been complete, except for, are you referring to the Highland property?
Power plant.
The power plant? I've provided the contract to the Mr. Whitrow, and he, I instructed him, you know, needs to review it and consult an attorney if he'd be, and that was a little bit ago, but I'm sure he'll come back and, if there's any modification.
The Highland property, what'd you say about it?
Well, it's still in, it's in, the ball's in their court, so to speak, so.
It's been turned over to L. Brian Williams, and I know L. Brian has been in Italy for a little bit, but, you know, we've completed what we need to complete, it's just up to him to finalize his deal. Any other miscellaneous comments? There will be no need for an executive session, so at this time, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second that.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no. Meeting adjourned.